Okay, we'll start the meeting and Diane had to send her regrets, but we will begin with an opening prayer. Jane, if you could lead us, please.
Sign of our faith, please, in the name of our Father, Son, Holy Spirit, amen. If you could join me in a Hail Mary. Hail Mary, full of grace, the Lord is with me. Blessed be thy name, and blessed is thy womb, Jesus. Holy Mary, mother of God, pray for us sinners, now at the hour of our death. Amen.
Okay, let's move on to approval of the agenda, because I have a mover. Trustee Michael, seconded by trustee Intomasi. All in favor? Okay, carried. Approval of the minutes from the December 12th meeting. I've got a mover, trustee Michael, seconded by trustee Quinn. Comments? Changes? None. All in favor? Okay, passes. Action items. So we'll begin with 3.1, international students. Superintendent Pennelli, would you like to lead this?
Thank you. This evening, I bring before your consideration a significant revision and enhancement to operating policy I-11 for international students. As you're well aware, keeping you abreast of the various recruitment trips and in trying in the last four years to, in fact, continue to attract and diversify our international population, there was definitely a need for our policy to reflect some of the changes and some of the questions that we are being asked by various partners. In particular, we also needed to incorporate, because the ministry is also taking a very active, proactive approach, and there is a document that is included as reference in this particular policy that was not in existence prior to this, and that's the Ontario Strategy for K-12 International Education that the ministry came out with a year and a half ago, that we needed to reflect a lot of the language, a lot of the expectation that the ministry has for school boards in being able to address and attract international students. In fact, you will see that there is an enhancement in the area of purpose and application and scope in this that we didn't have in the past. We are clearly defining definitions in terms of what is an international student, which we didn't have. We kept talking about visa students in the past. It talks about a great deal in terms of fee paying, what's a fee paying student, what's a lawful status of a student being able to attend our school board and being able to have a study permit to be able to be in one of our schools. So, a lot of the framework and a lot of the enhancements that has been incorporated is long overdue, that we needed to indeed incorporate this into our policy, and the requirements in terms of making sure that were very clear and what a fee paying student constitutes and what, in turn, we are doing in terms of providing them an opportunity for an excellent education and a diploma at the end of their stay with us. So, it also clearly outlines that if they don't follow our policies and procedures such as safe schools, which we've had incidences, what would happen to a fee paying student. After all, we want them to be successful. We're not here just to collect fees. We're here to provide an excellent opportunity for them to learn, to contribute to our students and our learning and culture, as well as providing them opportunities like any other student that we have in our communities. So, that's the gist of why we are bringing this forward, and as I said, it is to keep in alignment what the expectations are, not only in our board, but provincially as well. And I'm open to any comments from...
Thank you for that. Could we have a mover just to put it on the table, and then we'll... Okay, trustee Intomasi, seconded by trustee Quinn. And discussion. Trustee Rowe.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of questions. The valid study permit, does that apply only to certain countries, or is it put in here just to apply to everybody?
Just to everyone. Any international student that applies to Canada will have to submit. When we give a letter of acceptance, they then provide that to immigration, and immigration then issues a study permit. It has a timeframe on that study permit. When they submit that back to us, it's within two years, three years, the study permit is valid. And if it expires, which we've had situations that that does happen, if a student, for example, applies for a study permit coming out of grade eight or grade nine, it's for a two-year period, there's an expiry date, then we notify, and it is incumbent on the student to, in fact, reapply to get an extension.
So, a follow-up. That brings me then to the unlawful status in Canada. Would that student have had a permit, and then it expired? But if the parents are here unlawfully, how do we... If they come to us, and they want to come to our schools, apparently we cannot turn them away, which is good, but how does the permit thing work?
If their permit has expired and they have not been renewed, we don't renew and continue their attendance in our school. So, that's one way of being in the country unlawful. As for the parent piece, there are very few of these students that we're talking about that are here with a parent. They're here with a custodian. It is not a parent. So, how do they get in unlawfully? By an expired study permit, or potentially, if we're looking at a younger child, because we are getting requests at an elementary level, we're considering them only with their parent in attendance, and that's beyond us at this point in time. We do ask for that information, and it again falls back on the parent in terms of their status in the country.
Trustee Quinn.
Thank you. Just a follow-up to that, then. So, if a student came to the Halton region and came as a visitor or a vacationer and stayed with a family member, they're not legally in Canada, but they could bypass the 10 months of education by arriving at a high school, saying, "I'm currently staying in this community," and we don't turn them away? Or are we forced to require to take them away?
No, we're not required to take them. If they're here as a visitor, we do not admit anyone that's a visitor.
But if they say they're not a visitor?
Well, they'd have to provide documentation as to what their status is in the country. We would be asking that when they walk in to register with all the documentation they're required to provide.
I believe the Toronto Public Board has a "don't ask" policy. We don't have the policy where we don't ask for their status.
No, our registration is very thorough, and we do ask for it.
Thank you.
Trustee Trace.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Tony, I was reading, I don't think I saw how much it's costing. Is it still thirteen to fifteen or so, or have we moved that on?
That's a very good point, Susan. We did not put the amount, because we have to be competitive. Currently, what we do have is we... And it does reflect in even the procedure, and that is, we've also incorporated our insurance. Every student coming in now does have insurance, which we didn't have in the past. So, the fee has to be competitive, and that could change every time we come together in our organization, the Ontario organization. We are competitive, and you're correct. As it stands right now, we're looking at thirteen five plus insurance. But that could change in six months' time, so we did not put that in this, because that's very changeable.
Trustee Quinn.
Thank you, but we wouldn't want to put it below the GSN number, because then...
Oh, we do.
So, in policy, should we have something like that that states no less than the GSN price, although we want to be competitive?
And Fred, did you have a...
Through you, Mr. Chair. Further to Tony's points, the other caveat is that it has to be fully cost recoverable. So, it has to include not only the cost of the GSN, but also any additional supports that we may think necessary, such as ESL. So, we account for all that in the base tuition fund, and in terms of the insurance, again, the insurance is fully cost recovery on that point. So, we're not subsidizing in any way for competitiveness. We're just making sure that we are between those two.
And how often do staff make that determination of the... Do you review the cost annually? Which... Maybe you could explain the process.
Yes, we do review annually the costs, and through the Education Act, as well as in the GSN, there's a calculation as a guideline that we follow, and we want to make sure that we are including all those additional supports and help within, whether it's assistance from other departments or ESL support and so forth. So, annually, we are looking at that, as well as looking at what other school boards' programs are offering and the prices.
Trustee Carabella.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. I have two questions, just about the home stay program. So, I know there's an increase in the students that we're getting, and is it easy to find them a place? And then, it's the home stay provider, a third-party home stay provider. Do they try and place them in Catholic homes, or with other students from our schools?
The home stay provider is the responsibility of the agent and the family, and many of them, we provide a list of home stay providers, but they may go on a website and find their own home stay, and we do have that going on. Are they Catholics? Again, that is up to the family and the agent in terms of the home stays that they are looking at. We are continuing, I do want to share, that we know that we have to come back. As we continue to grow, home stay is an area that you will hear me come back to the board to talk about. We continue to work on that right now, and so are other boards.
Sorry, could you clarify, in what way? In what way will home stay come back?
Because there are various home stay providers right now across Ontario, across Canada. Many of them are very conscientious and very supportive, and there are those that are not, and we're beginning to see some of that.
Trustee Intomasi.
I just wanted to say thank you, because I didn't realize it wasn't our responsibility. So, thank you.
It isn't.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Tony, I'm just wondering, do you know what the percentage breakdown roughly would be that we're getting Catholic versus non-Catholic, or is that an unfair question?
Again, as I've shared with the board in our recruitment endeavors, we are actively trying to diversify. As you well know, the vast majority of the 230 students that I've shared in our last board report, they are predominantly secondary students, and as you know, we have open access at secondary. So, the vast majority of them are non-Catholics, because we do admit them, because that's part and parcel of our secondary policy. However, at the elementary, we are adhering to the board policy, and the Catholic component is front and center. But as we diversify to Catholic countries, that should be shifting, and it will be shifting.
Just along that line, though, they're obviously picking our schools for a reason. They're aware they're Catholic schools, and they're complying with our religious program, I'm assuming.
Absolutely. They have to take religion.
Any further questions? I just had one quick one, and that is, in the policy itself, it talks about somewhere, "We must give the same extracurricular and other programming to these international students, and certainly we want to provide the best experience possible." I guess my question comes in, when you have specialized programming like IB, which has very limited spaces, is there any thought that... Are we, one, allowed to prioritize Halton students? Are we allowed by regulation? And, two, has that been considered by staff?
It's an interesting question, because I'm directly, as you know, involved in AP and IB. We have not, as of to date, had any request from any international student for those programs. The issue is that most of the international students are already coming in in grade ten or eleven. So, by that point in time, we have our pre-IB program starting in grade nine. They would have missed already the opportunity. And the other piece of it is the English as a second language. That becomes an obstacle in terms of them having to have their English classes as taking part of their timetable, which would prevent them from being able to be in some of those specialized programs that you're referring to. Because you've got a package, as you know, in an IB, I've presented to the board many times, and if you don't have those availabilities on your timetable, you can't be doing pre-IB, the following subjects, you're not going to be able to get into the rest of that program. So, that's where the limitations comes in. It's just a natural limitation of somebody applying in grade ten or grade eleven. It's difficult to go back and do those courses.
Understood. Any further questions? Seeing none, we have a mover and a seconder, so could we vote on this policy? All in favor? Against? Seeing none, it passes. Great. Well, we almost always talk about the procedures within action itself, so... Thank you. Okay, trustee Rowe.
If I could just ask a supplementary question, and it's to do with what you're looking at, the home providers. Because we're not responsible, but something happens, it's reflected on us, correct? So, is that the kind of thing we're looking at, trying to set some standards or something like that, that they would sign on to?
You're absolutely correct. There are two components beyond the educational, which is what we are focusing on that we need to address, and that is the custodian that is in Canada. Again, that varies in terms of how a family accesses a custodial parent, a guardian, which is beyond us. And then, there is also the home stay providers that are, as we said, some of them, the parents are going directly to home stays, because they know someone, they're a family friend. Others are being dealt with through agents and through... So, those are two areas that we know, as a board, that we need to look at and come back to you in terms of what is happening with other boards. We're not the only board dealing with this right now.
Thank you.
With international students.
Okay. Okay, thank you for that. Just moving on to 3.2, which is the trustee code of conduct. Superintendent Overholt, does he want to...
Through you, Mr. Chair. Policy I-36, trustee code of conduct, is there. This is the initial review of a policy that was first brought in in October of 2011. We are suggesting very minor amendments, added some reference to it, and there was a policy that was in reference to a policy that has since been rescinded and replaced with another one, so that policy I-43 has been replaced. So, those are the only changes that are being recommended.
Thank you. Could I have a mover for this? Trustee Rowe, seconded by trustee Intomasi. Discussion. Trustee Carabella.
Thank you. This is minor. Just under principles, that first paragraph, there's a phrase that's repeated. "Whereas the aim of Catholic education is the development of each student towards personal fulfillment and responsible citizenship, of each student towards personal fulfillment and responsible citizenship." So, that phrase. Towards personal fulfillment.
Any further comments on this one? Trustee Quinn.
Maybe just a comment on regulating our own code of conduct. We're just following all the ministry regulations here. We haven't... There's no codes of conduct outside of our requirements that are in this document, right? We're just...
What I...
Everything else is a guideline, right? So, we have Ministry of Education, or Education Act regulations, and everything else is a guideline. Is that my understanding of it?
And I would also just comment that if you look at, like, the Ontario Catholic Trustees' Association guidelines for trustees, all of them across the board seem to be pretty much in line, but you're right. There are, you know, the regulations outline in the Act itself, and then there are decorum and the rest of it, which we have added in. So, trustee Dan.
Is guideline number 12 in the Act?
I don't know. Trustee, superintendent.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I am not sure. I have to go and take a look.
Mr. Chair, I wondered how we could ever possibly enforce guideline number 12, and what the penalty would be in case guideline number 12 was breached.
So, why don't you explain guideline number 12, since you...
Just go to page 21.
Okay, so trustee Danko is referring to, "Trustees shall not use their position for improper gain or benefit, and shall not, under any circumstances, accept gifts or hospitality of more than $100 on gifts and hospitality." Any further comments on that, or are you just pointing it out?
I'm just pointing out that we have a policy, and I usually am the person who points out adherence to policies and how they could be broken or breached, and pointing out that we all are subject to them, whether it's the director, or the chair, or somebody who sweeps the floors. Why is it there if we can't enforce it? Or if it's in a breach, if it's been in breach, what's the penalty for it? Because if that little guideline 12 can't be enforced, maybe it should just be taken out, and maybe all the things we can enforce should be removed.
Sorry, trustee Michael, and then trustee Intomasi.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Like, there's a lot of things, I believe, that can't be enforced. For example, confidentiality and open camera. How do we know that people don't say anything? How do you enforce that, and how do you... What are the punitive measures taken?
Trustee Intomasi.
I just wanted to say, it does say guideline. But I do believe, and tell me, you can correct me, trustee Danko, I believe this came up in our conversation when we developed this policy, and I think the number was... Maybe I'm confusing it with one of the other policies, but I think we brought the number down, and if I'm not mistaken, it might have been you that suggested that $100 be the cap, because I think we talked about what is a reasonable amount of money. Now, that may have been in our travel extensions, but I think this almost ties into it, but I think it is a guideline.
Further comments? Seeing none. Okay, would we... Like, we have a mover and a seconder? Okay, would we, like, we have a mover and a seconder? All in favor of this policy? Raise your hand. Against? Okay, it passes. To 3.3, reporting to parents, parent interviews. Superintendent Overhold.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Policy before you has gone under some revisions. We've added references specifically related to assessment and learning. And previously, if you look into what is posted right now, we have no application in scope and no principle. So we have added that to the policy. Certainly, it was required. And also made sure that all types of reportings were put in there in regards to alternative report cards for those students who may not be accessing the Ontario curriculum, or some of our identified students. And we also are proposing a name change to the policy, so it's more specific, reporting student achievement to parents and guardians. Those are the changes that are, we are recommending.
Thank you. Could I have a mover for this? Trustee Michael, seconded by trustee Carabella, excuse me. Trustee Carabella.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. I was just wondering, on the last page, the third bullet, it talks about communicating with parents. And it seems that every way of communicating is mentioned, except email. And I'm wondering if that's on purpose, or do teachers email, or is there protocol for email between teachers and students?
Superintendent, do you want to...
Through you, Mr. Chair. So is this under the secondary? Communication can, certainly can take place a variety of ways. I'm just going through there to see...
Just mentions a lot of things, and not emails, and, or maybe texting even. I don't know. Do teachers have any policies of not texting, or not emailing, or students?
Is it, is it your second, communication with parents, guardians, and students about student achievement should be continuous throughout the course by means such as parent-teacher interview, teacher confidence portfolios, or student work, student-led conferences, interviews, etc.
Phone calls, yes.
You know, what we can do is put "not limited to," so that there can be a variety of ways. Would that be, would that work?
But just to follow up, is there anything that teachers try and do not do emails, or...
Through you, Mr. Chair. There is nothing per se that they cannot. They certainly have to be cautious in terms of their interactions, particularly with students. They certainly can interact through email with parents. However, we find the best way to communicate is face-to-face or through a verbal conversation. So you certainly can really get a good understanding of what's transpiring between the two parties. Email's sometimes difficult to do.
Tryt.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Tim, you'd also want to look under elementary, same deal. Thanks.
Any further comments or questions? No. See none? All in favor? Opposed? See none? It passes. Moving right along to 3.4, educational research surveys and pilot projects.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to try my attempt. Unfortunately, our chief researcher, Lisa Colmore, is ill for the last few days, so I'm going to try to sub in for her in regards to the changes that have been made. The report is there for you. So certainly, the changes that have been made relate to the practices that are currently taking place. Want to make sure that all types of research activities were included in the policy, because they certainly get a variety of types of research. It's not just surveys that they are getting. References were added. And certainly moved certain things around in the policy, so that it made sense in terms of, of order. And certainly spoke of specific changes where they were moved, or removed from the policy, and explanation as to why those pieces were removed for it. They, she is recommending as well a name change from surveys and pilot projects to reflect the name change to educational research. So happy to answer questions that I'm able to. If not, we can defer to when Lisa is back.
Okay. On that note, could I have a mover, or would you like to defer it? So could I have a mover for, for this? Okay, trustee Carabella, seconded by trustee Tryt. And discussion. Trustee Row.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Excuse me. My only, the only thing that popped into mind as I was reading it was the use of external researchers, and their access to classrooms, or individual students, and no police check, all this kind of stuff. And I'm wondering if something along that line should be inserted in there, about someone, like, internal researchers, right? Of course, they, they have all the clearances as every other teacher, so they can sit in a room quietly with one student and, and interact. But external researchers is my concern.
Through you, Mr. Chair. In the procedure part of, the procedure, it does speak to criminal reference checks being required. If you look under the requirements, under, it doesn't, did you see, did you look at the procedure? Procedure? Yeah. So I, they do talk, she does talk about for external applicants on the requirements section. I'm just seeing if it's there in regards to criminal reference checks. The number six bullet, depending on the nature of the study, external researchers may be required to provide a vulnerable sector screening criminal reference check before being granted permission to enter school sites.
Trustee Quinn, you had a question?
Maybe a comment on, just on the purpose. The purpose prior to this edit was to provide trustees with input. And that's no longer the purpose of this policy. It's to support and encourage internal research activities. So this policy change will take away yet another reason for trustees to exist. And I'm always concerned, policies tend to do that, or changes in policies tend to do that.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I will answer for Lisa, and again, she may have further clarification. However, it, she made the change based on practices that are currently taking place. A lot of what is research is certainly operational in nature, and I don't remember or recall her coming to trustees in regards to input for surveys that are taking place. It is something that comes to her department, and she certainly vets whether or not it's appropriate, based on her knowledge and experience of surveys, and what they are asking for, and what's certainly based on the policy. So that's why those changes were presented as required, why she suggested those changes for the purpose.
Okay, further, sorry, trustee Quinn, and then trustee Carabella.
Thank you. On the, the following page, 28, page two of two, just the top line, "The board promotes and endorses a gathering of data for research purposes in keeping with the core values of the Catholic Church." I'd like to see that, and maybe I will propose amendment, that the board requires that the gathering of data for research purposes will be in keeping with the core values of the Catholic Church. So promotes and endorses doesn't, isn't strong enough language for me. I'd like to amend that to, "The board requires the gathering of data for research purposes will be in keeping with the core values of the Catholic Church."
Just based on how the sentence is, is written, I think, I know what you're getting at, but perhaps, like, you may want comma purposes requiring it to be in keeping with the core values of the Catholic Church. Versus requiring the gathering of data, but it could go either way. Okay. Well, let's go with, we'll go with yours, since you made the amendment, and do we have a seconder for the amendment? Trustee Carabella? Okay, seconded. All in favor? Any opposed? See none? Amendment passes? And are you okay with the language there? We'll see it at the board anyway, right? Okay. Okay. Any further comments? Oh yeah, trustee Carabella, sorry about that.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. I was wondering about the letter of consent to participate versus passive consent. Is that in this policy? When we do send out surveys, if some mention is about consent, active consent and passive Maybe it was in the administrative procedures.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Talks of consent in the procedure, number 11. Stroke, strikeout, number 11. Informed consent is required for all research activities that are not conducted under the authority of the Education Act.
That's right. Okay. So with, with that in mind, there are some things that we do do that is passive consent, where it just happens, I think it's the tell them through, tell them through me survey, that only if you don't want to do it, you have to sign. Otherwise, it's given to all the students. I don't know if there's other surveys we do, or if that should be mentioned.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair. I'm not sure. I'd have to check with our researcher.
I don't really have a, a further comment, but I was just reaffirming what trustee Carabella is saying, that that is true, that we only require passive consent for the, what used to be called the tell them from me, it's the school climate survey. Yeah.
Uh, we... I was just going to check the page of this. Oh, thank you. Yeah, trustee Quinn.
So following up on trustee Carabella's point there, number eight says, "When students participating in study are under the age of 18, consent must be obtained from a parent or guardian." And that is not the case for the tell them from me study. So the operation, I'm wondering if the operating policy procedure is being followed right now.
To respond to that, through you, Mr. Chair, research would actually consider passive consent a form of consent. So if you wanted to change that, you would have to just, because right now, the way it is, it is consent, you would just need to change it to active consent, if that's, if that's your wish.
Through you, Mr. Chair. So to do so, we'd have to add something into policy itself that would take precedent over the procedure. So then, I'd like to amend the policy, if we can go back to that, then is that, can we do that still?
So, so I think, why don't we, so there's a couple of ways we deal with this, right? We could just defeat, defeat it with some notes, and maybe it would be more appropriate to have the, to have our, the reasons here as well to ask those questions, but maybe we could bring another version of this with the initial comments on it, just to keep this going. And in that way, if there's a specific reason, reason why she's put this in, she can, she can let us know, versus sending this to the board right away, and us bringing it back again. Would that, would that be appropriate?
It would. And I, maybe if we have consensus around the table here, that we would like to see language come back that indicates that parental consent for those under 18 must be given before students can participate in research.
Um, does anyone oppose that? Nope. We're going to get her reaction anyway from it next, at the next meeting. If that could be a note, that would be, that would be helpful. Any other comments we want to send back before we defeat this? Trustee, or if we defeat this? Trustee Carabella?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just had another question because of this, that's why I zoned in on this, because a parent told me that with the school climate, her grade five boy was asked if he smoked marijuana, and she found that really inappropriate, and the boy came home, kind of like, why are they asking me? So is that for fact, do you know, or if they would ask that of a grade five?
I don't remember that being a question on the school climate survey. I'm wondering if it's the youth survey that was done a few years ago? I, I don't remember that being a question. I can...
Right. It's probably the Government of Canada survey or something. Trustee Superintendent Overhold.
Through you, Mr. Chair, just to get clarification from trustee Quinn. The comment that's in the procedure, when students participating in, in the study are under the age of 18, consent must be obtained from a parent or guardian. Is that what you're looking for?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I'd like to see number eight in the, in the procedure as part of the policy, so that any students participating in research, or parents have to give consent for them to participate. And that would include the school climate survey, or the tell them from me.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I guess the question, I, I guess getting clarification on, it is in the procedure, so it needs to be followed. So I'm just wondering what the difference you're seeing in regards to having it in the procedure as opposed to the policy.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Because we're using a passive consent model now, although I see that the language here is, is saying consent must be obtained from the parent, that's not happening right now. So I'd like to see in the policy, so that we can go through.
Superintendent Pennelli had a comment she wanted to make.
Is actually coming out of safe schools. And that's a mandate that has, is part of our safe schools policy, if you recall. It's coming from the ministry, that student voice and student empowerment, that we are required by legislation to ask students directly. So I know Lisa can address more of that, but I know that it's already part and parcel of our other policy, that we have to do that every two years.
If it would be possible, superintendent, if you, if you could make a note on, you know, what we'd like to see, and then we could get feedback if it is, in fact, in legislation, we're required and we have no choice, that can be an answer, certainly. But at least, at least you kind of have the direction we're hoping to go in. Yeah, please, trustee Quinn.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that information. It was, when questions about the tell them from me came up in the past, we were told it was proprietary, and we couldn't see the questions. But now I believe we're bringing it in-house, so I think the trustees will have better access to the questions, and perhaps more comfort with what they're going to be. But I'm still interested in consent from parents for any research on our students.
Other comments on this one? It's obviously going to come back again if, please, trustee Carabella.
Thank you. This is just about in general, in our, on our website. Does anyone have trouble with the search engine on our website? Because, I don't know, it just made me think of it when we were doing research, and I punch in things on. I don't understand how our search engine on our website works.
I'm going to politely say, let's take that one offline, but let's get an answer to it, just because it's not germane to this.
Sure, yes, thank you.
But we will, let's follow up on that. Okay, so 3.4, that's 3.4. I guess we want to vote on it. I think we've all spoke about how we want this to come back. So all in favor? Jane, are you, oh, okay, so there are two, sorry, all in favor? Two, okay. Opposed? Okay. Sorry, just want to be clear, I wasn't, wasn't, wasn't sure. So three, so it is defeated, and it will come back to the next, to the next meeting, and hopefully, let's, we will wait until we have her in the room, and she already has our initial note, so we can keep this going. 3.5, school, oh, so this is, this is a fun one. 3.5, school uniform dress code. So I'm going to do a quick intro to this one, which is, we voted at a committee of a, of the whole, we voted for this to go to the board. And, you know, and I understand that people's minds can change through this, but we didn't even put it for discussion, it didn't have a seconder at the board meeting, so we just sent it back. Which is, which is fine to do, which is fine to do, but my only suggestion would be, we really, so superintendent's going to speak to why we need... be, uh, we, we really, um, so superintendent's gonna speak to why we need this passed, or, or what makes sense to be passed, and let's keep the, the conversation on that, and if this, and if there's a larger discussion that has to be had about uniforms, you know, we, we can have it in policy, of course, or at the board, whatever the, the group would like, but, um, there is an urgency, uh, to a, to a portion of this, and I just hope we can, uh, move the discussion in, in, in that way and, and get it done, but superintendent, over hold.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair, um, as was just mentioned, this is similar changes that we have brought forward at the last policy meeting related to consolidation enclosure of schools and, uh, uniforms of how it is affect, how it affects moving forward and how to address those, um, situations. Uh, right now, we have, uh, specific schools, uh, that are under consolidation enclosure, that are meeting as transition teams, and part of that purpose of the transition team is, um, certainly to make, uh, that transition for students and families as smooth as possible, um, and to bring those communities together. This, without being able to make some adjustments to this policy, or as I will mention in a minute, some, um, possibly exemption to the policy, it certainly defeats that goal. Um, we're gonna have two groups, two communities coming together, um, one with a uniform, one without, we don't have anything in place, it certainly will divide that community right from the beginning, and that's certainly exactly opposite as to what we're trying to do. We're trying to bring two communities, that certainly has gone under some contentious ways to get to where they are, and certainly, still the emotions are high, but we're getting to a point where communities are on board, and I'd hate to start a school year off where you have such an obvious sign of two different communities. So, I, I guess I'm, I'm asking to either look at this as a policy change, to put those changes in place where, um, we've made those recommendations. If that's not going to happen, it'd be great to find out here at this table, so that I can bring forward to the regular board meeting exemption to the policy, that I would, again, the exemption would be to do the same things that I'm asking for in the policy. So, I, I guess I'm asking that, there is one additional amendment that I am putting, and there was an oversight in the past, uh, in regards to the RFP process and the involvement of CPIC members, uh, before, it stated that three CPIC members would be part of the RFP, it has been changed to, the CPIC members would be there to, uh, provide, prior to the RFP, to provide input in terms of establishing the criteria of the RFP, so I, I leave it for discussion.
Could I, could I have a mover? Trustee Tomasi, a second or? Uh, trustee Michael, okay, uh, discussion? Trustee Tomasi.
Just that I'm in support, uh, of the most, of the changes, I think it, it does what it's supposed to do and allows communities to come together in a similar way.
Trustee Quinn.
Uh, perhaps through you to, to Tim, do we have any, uh, schedule when we'll receive the report from, uh, staff on the uniform policy, the, the, uh, the comments from parents regarding our, our, our outreach on this policy change, and if we'll have it before we vote on this in the, in the main, the main meetings?
Through you, Mr. Chair, in regards to the request after the last delegation, in terms of finding out from other boards, I know it has been, the research has been done, I just don't know which meeting is going to be coming forward to, it was gonna be coming in February, I just don't know if it's the first one or the second one, I'm, I'm not sure.
Trustee Carabella.
Well, would we be able to review the policy when those, uh, feedback comes back with the staff report? So, if this goes through now and gets passed for this, but that, we could review it if the staff, parent, the staff report comes back with things to look at, the assistance program, in particular, um-
Through you, Mr. Chair, one thing I did, uh, forget to mention is that the recommend dates, recommended changes from the last policy meeting, related to some of the topics, have been incorporated into the policy as well, one was in regards to, um, you know, having a, a program at all schools, so that is in that policy. I, I guess, the, I think, the ask of, after the delegation was to find out from other boards what their practices were in regards to, uh, uniforms, and, um, whether or not it was, um, one uniform provider and so on, so I think that was the ask, I don't know what that will change in regards to what, I guess my ask of is in regards to this, by all means, if there are other things, there's nothing to say we can't bring this policy back to the policy, uh, committee meeting and, and look at changes at that point in time.
Further comments or questions? Trustee Quinn.
I think to be consistent in my concern with this policy, I'm gonna propose an amendment that we remove the line, elementary schools must use the board's authorized uniform supplier.
Is there a second or? You, you're gonna second it?
Uh, did you want to, uh, through you, Mr. Chair, report of order?
Yes.
We voted on this two months ago.
That's, that's true, I just-
You can rule it out of order.
We, at this, at this session, we'll go through the, the motions, if you, if you wanna, if you wanna put it forward, we'll, we'll, if there's a second or after what we've heard, then, then, uh, then we'll, we'll vote on it, for, on, on the amendment, but trustee Carabella.
Can you repeat the amendment?
My amendment is to, uh, part seven C, the uniform supplier, sorry, part seven, I guess there's, there's no, uh, number attached to it, that elementary schools must use the board's authorized uniform supplier, proposing to remove that line.
Uh, trustee, uh, trustee Tomasi.
Through you, Mr. Chair, we have a contract with a supplier, I don't see how we could strike that.
Yeah, uh, trustee Quinn and trustee Danko.
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair, we've been waiting to hear back from senior staff on what the rules were for, for getting out of that contract, we, that was requested from staff, and we haven't heard back from them, uh, that was two or three meetings ago.
I believe we had, um, a similar question asked, uh, a couple of meetings ago, perhaps, um, and, uh, the, the cancellation clauses are if there's a significant change to policy, so, and it might not be the only change, because within it, if it talks about one supplier or the board supplier, um, if, for example, the policy changes and, and the uniform is required to be only color coding, and say there's, um, uh, only embroidery required, and the embroidery can be occurring anywhere else, things like that, with enough notice, which we will have to figure out what enough notice means, based on, uh, the fact that we require them to have a couple of million dollars in inventory, so we do have to take that into account, that is one of the options, it, it is a significant change in policy.
Okay, thank you, uh, I, I'm just gonna end this discussion now, I'm gonna rule it out of order, and the reason why I'm gonna rule it out of order is because we're going to have this discussion again and, and again, and I, I think that trustee Danko is, is right, and all we're gonna do is we're gonna play with numbers in this room on any given meeting, and that's the entire point of not bringing up an item again and again and again. So, um, we, we voted on that at this, at this committee, I believe we voted it at, when you've attempted to put it at the, the board meeting? Yeah, cor- correct, which is, which is your, your prerogative, uh, and, you know, you can bring up notices, motions and the rest of it, uh, like any other trustee can, but I, I do agree that, um, the, the entire point of the rules is to, to avoid this from happening for us to revote again and again and again. Uh, trustee Quinn.
Thank you, I understand your ruling, Mr. Chair, however, had this policy not come back to policy committee for discussion, I wouldn't be making these amendments, we've brought in, we've brought the policy back again to me, a policy which I have a problem with, I think it's my duty as a trustee to, to attempt to amend it, and I can have a second or not, we can have a discussion about it or not, and then it can be defeated, but I, I, I disagree with your ruling that I shouldn't be able to make amendments to these, to these policies as a trustee.
Fair enough, that's the ruling.
Chairman, you made the correct ruling, because it's also a duty of a trustee not to waste the board's time by voting over and over and over again on the same motion. We've done it before at this committee, and it was wrong then, and it's wrong now.
Okay, so it's-
So, it's the correct ruling, so thank you for the correct ruling. In fact, even bringing the policy-
No, 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 sorry, you're, you're out of order right now, we, we've dealt with this matter, we're not gonna be, you know, we actually just went through the guidelines of trustees, which is to be polite to everyone and to, and to have constructive dialogue, the entire, the entire, we know why this is on the agenda for this meeting, which is to satisfy something that staff have told us we need to satisfy, so we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna end this discussion, since, one, it's not collegial whatsoever, and we're gonna move on to what we're actually supposed to be discussing with this, with this policy today, thank you. Anything on this discussion? Trustee Danko.
Trustee Mariah, it's my opinion that bringing the policy back at all tonight was not the correct thing to do, because it was not voted on, it was not decided at the last meeting, the, um, amendment that's being sought is one to, uh, handle an exceptional case of a school consolidation, therefore, my advice to this committee is to bring it back as a policy exception, which will require a three-quarter vote at the next meeting, not as a policy amendment, I don't believe it should have been handled as an amendment in the first place, because it's an exceptional circumstance, the closure of a school is not a routine thing, it's not a day-to-day thing, it happens once in a blue moon.
Uh, any further discussions on that? Would the committee prefer it to be in, uh, to be in, uh, the policy itself, and, and I guess the concern now is that we do have a couple other items, one being the financial assistance, uh, that is in, that's written in the policy, and then superintendent over hold also mentioned, uh, the third, I guess, minor change, uh, that, that references CPIC, so, um, look, we, we can, we can do, we can do two things tonight, and those two things are, we can either, we can, if you decide to defeat this, uh, this at, at policy tonight, it's not gonna go to the board, in which case, you're going to be bringing forward an exception, which would satisfy some, some members, uh, or the alternative is, we could just pass all of this, um, and, uh, or the third option, and there is a third option, is we could pass the items in this, except for that exception, and move that to the board, so, uh, I think we can have a fulsome discussion on that, any other, any comments on what direction we wanna go in? Trustee Row.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um, although up to now, we, we have only, we've never had to close schools in, except in a blue moon, but the truth of the matter is, we do need it in the policy, because, um, these things are gonna be happening more often, so I would vote on, uh, moving the whole, the whole pa- package forward.
Uh, any further thoughts on that? Trustee Carabella.
Can I ask a, a question through you, Mr. Chair, how does the exemption work, then? It's still written out as it is, but it's just like a, an exemption?
Through you, Mr. Chair, I would have to come, it wouldn't be in the policy, I would have to come to the board, um, and request that exception, um, of change to the, to exception from the policy.
Chairman Ri, it's just a resolution, it's just a resolution we passed where that these two schools are exempt from policy, uh, two dash forty-one for the duration of their transition process, it's that simple, and another exception can be brought when the next school closure comes, if it's needed, because this exemption is required because one school has a uniform and one doesn't, right? So, it's an exceptional thing, and a blue moon's coming up next week, by the way.
I would suggest that we call the vote, see where the chips fall, and just take it from there, because I think we could sit here and debate, I, I see where trustee Danko's coming from, and I agree, it could be dealt with as an exception, but we do have the other things to consider, so I would just say, go ahead, take the vote, and if it has to come back, broken up into pieces, although we still may have to change-
But, but I'm, if I may before, and I'll, I will pass it, I'm trying to make us look semi-competent, in the sense of, we keep sending things back to the board, which, which is a function of, of any board, but frankly, um, you know, we could be talking about a lot of other good things as well, uh, that benefit the board, so, I, I, I guess I was hoping for a bit more direction on, on where you wanna go, so that, you know, when we, when it gets to the board, we don't have one or two people changing their minds, which actually sends it back, that's my only, to, to try to get a better sense, does anyone else wanna speak to, to it? Superintendent, you had a comment to make.
Through you, Mr. Chair, I guess my, my only concern, um, with it not going through policy, and again, that's prerogative of, of trustees, is we come to the board, and it needs a three-quarter approval, if we're back to the point where we don't get that approval, we're back in the same boat, and it's the same position that we're putting this community in, is we've got a start of a school year with half the kids in uniforms, half the kids are not, so, I, I guess, that's, that's my concern where it, and again, I can't predict anything as to what's, can happen at the, uh, board meeting, um, but it is something I think we need to think about, is if we want, if you agree that this is what should happen, um, I guess it's a matter of how that's going to look and which way you want to go with it, but I, I'd hate to get back to the table again, and we're still in the same boat, and that community's, they've been asking in transition meeting twice now, when are we gonna talk about uniforms? It's not that, if they're oblivious to it, they've asked twice already, and we've said we're waiting until decision gets made at this table.
Further comments before we take the vote? How people feel about it? No one wants to, uh, trustee Quinn.
Just may we have a recorded vote, please?
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, well, then we'll, we'll vote on it, and all, all those, all those items, there's a, there's a few in there, uh, so, uh, could we go around the table, uh, starting with trustee, uh, Carabella?
I'm in favor.
Trustee Tomasi.
Just to be clear, we are voting on the amendment, or we are voting on the main motion?
No, 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 just, okay, that's, that's a fair question.
On the main motion.
The amendment was ruled out of order, there is only, there is only the motion on the floor, uh, and that's what we're voting on, so, uh, trustee Carabella, in favor or against?
In favor.
Trustee Tomasi.
In favor.
Uh, trustee Michael.
In favor.
Trustee Traits.
In favor.
Trustee Danko.
Opposed.
Trustee Row.
In favor. Opposed.
Okay. It carries. Okay, so, we're moving on to, and that will come up in two weeks' time, there's no meeting in two minutes, three point six, uh, school accidents, uh, safety, uh, superintendent over hold.
Through you, Mr. Chair, at the regular board meeting in December, I presented to trustees, uh, the Ontario Student Injury Prevention Initiative, um, part of that initiative was to ensure policy was in place, um, in regards to the prevention of, of injuries on school board and school board sites. Um, seeing our current policy, I, um, looked at this policy as one in which we can incorporate more preventative measures, um, that would address the Ontario Student Injury Prevention Initiative, many of the things that are already in that policy, uh, certainly, uh, relate to that, so, um, the main amendments that, in additions to the policy, were to describe and to, uh, add preventative measures that we, we already do, uh, just, uh, certainly codifying it in the policy, um, as well as providing, uh, proper details in regard of reporting accidents that do occur through OSB, um, and also to reflect, um, the change of the preventative measures, we've, are considering, recommending a name change to school accidents prevention and safety, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Could I have a mover, please? Uh, trustee Tomasi, a second or, trustee Traits, thank you, uh, discussion? Questions? Trustee Quinn.
Maybe just a question to, uh, superintendent over hold, thi- this policy seems, uh, unlike most of them, to really, uh, an attempt to protect us from, from, uh, liability, or ensuring that our policies are, are in place to protect or ensure from liability, as well as protecting the health of children, so, have we put enough, uh, legal minds towards this policy in protecting the liability- So have we put enough, uh, legal minds towards this policy in protecting the liability of the trustees and of the board itself? That's just my one question.
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair. Certainly, I can vet it through legal if that's what, uh, the will is of trustees. The practices that we have put in and the preventative strategies certainly, uh, do our practices that protects the board because it covers the requirements of staff, administrators, uh, to make sure that all individuals are well aware of the guidelines and the safety procedures that need to be followed. Um, we have practices that occur on a regular basis, uh, to ensure that we do cover ourselves in regards to, uh, proper procedures and process that we have to follow.
Questions? See none, I will take the vote. Uh, all in favor? Opposed? See none, it passes. Moving on to discussion items, four point one, policy committee meeting in March. Uh, so, uh, in, in just reviewing the policy plan, uh, for the future and, and also specifically noting, uh, what's happened with the uniform dress code, just the extended discussion we've had, which is the prerogative of this committee. But also the upcoming executive compensation, uh, policy. I thought, um, given some of these are a bit weightier policies and new policies, that it may make sense to look at having a, uh, policy meeting in March. We don't have one scheduled for, uh, for March. Um, so looking at, so I wanted to ask the committee if that's something we could do. And, um, specifically, we were looking at, I'm open to dates, but we were looking at the, the twenty, sorry, my calendar's just, twenty-second, the Thursday, the twenty-second of March as one, as one option. Uh, the eighth as another option. Uh, but basically a policy meeting in between, uh, a couple of board meetings to keep the approvals, uh, flowing, uh, with the board. Trustee Quinn.
Uh, March twenty-second would work for me, I'd be happy to attend.
The, he was saying the twenty-second worked for him. It's a Thursday. Yeah, I saw that today. Okay, why don't I send out an email and, and we'll see? But does everyone kind of believe that it makes sense for us to put one in there? I, I, okay, okay, great. Uh, I'll send out and we can just, and I guess we'll just do it by, uh, whoever the majority is and we'll do a call in as well for those who, who can, uh, just to accommodate as many people as possible. Great. Okay, so in, uh, information items, we covered, uh, looks like five point one to five point four. When I was looking through this, the community service seems to be, okay. So Superintendent Makelethuddy, uh, you have the community service hours.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I think, uh, going back to perhaps the, one of the October meetings, policy meeting, there was a question about how does the students go about getting their forty hours community service requirement for graduation, um, which I attempted to answer at that meeting. And then there was a quest for a follow-up to provide the documentation that the students do actually use to demonstrate that they have collected the forty hours. And so it's attached in your package and I would, uh, take questions at this time.
Just hope people move to that part of the package. Um, just one question for you. Is everything done kind of manually by like paper still, uh, with the, with the...
In terms of, uh, the, the paperwork of, of, uh, students demonstrating with the supportive documentation from the charities and the other groups that they work for, yes, the students bring in paper, but it's recorded in Trillium, uh, for the purposes of establishing their, uh, graduation requirements, just like their credits and so on are. So it's part paper, part electronic.
Through you, Mr. Chair. So this is just a general, I think we heard back when this came up that sometimes there was fudging on the hours. If they did a two-hour can drive, they got eight hours worth of service. Are you aware that maybe it was just, maybe some of our people handling this in the school weren't aware that they really weren't doing our students a favor? Forty hours is forty hours. Are you aware, Superintendent, that that's been taken care of? If those things were happening, were you aware of this?
Through you, Mr. Chair. The issue that hit the news wasn't from our board, it was from other boards around the province where it had emerged that irregularities had occurred in terms of what was given to students in terms of, either they were, either they were activities that wouldn't meet the criteria of what was eligible or there was, uh, there were irregularities in the number of hours being given vis a vis the number of hours being served. We were not aware of any of those kinds of circumstances happening in our board.
Let me think about this. Um, I remember having a discussion and some of these things were highlighted and I, the discussion went along the ways that maybe people who were doing it within our board, and this is specific to our board, that they thought they were doing our young people a favor, but they were, really weren't. It mightn't have been this year, it might have been in years before. But I think there was a general sense that maybe things, it, it's not particular to the policy. It's just that when you do two hours on a can drive, that's all you get. You don't get eight hours. And I think we might even named a couple of schools. Just keep your ear to the ground, maybe.
Uh, I guess the only thing I would say is you can go back and check the transcript or, or the videos of those meetings. I don't recall a conversation about any incidents taking place in our board.
Trustee Quinn?
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, uh, through you, Mr. Chair. My recollection of, of the discussion was, there was, uh, an allegation in the Hamilton School Board where students had recorded a teacher encouraging them to attend, uh, an activity. I think it was a pro-life activity. And because it was on a Sunday and because they were getting there on their own, they were receiving extra credit for the time. And, and the student recorded that and it came out of the news. And the response from the Minister of Education and from the premier at the time was that they will look into it whether, A, the, the, uh, the policies in the school boards were in place to ensure that the, the teachers or the administrators weren't giving double credit and whether or not activities that we have listed here would count towards that, those hours. And, and when I see political organizations and religious and environmental organizations, so those are the kinds of, uh, groups that the minister, the ministry was, was contemplating might not be eligible for, for, for hours. So my question at the time was, should we have a policy in place? Uh, we didn't have access to this document or I hadn't seen it before, but should, the question is, should we have a policy in place that, that oversees this, that has requirements of the administrators, has requirements of the students and is overseen by, by the, by the board of trustees to ensure that we're, we're not only complying with the ministry's regulations, but our students are actually getting value for those forty hours and not just trying to, to run them off as quickly as possible?
Comments? Okay, thank you very much. Uh, moving on, uh, we just have a tentative, five point six is a tentative, uh, meeting schedule for, I, I think the idea is that the, based on Thursday, whatever we do on Thursday, um, we'll see if that monopolizes, uh, next meeting. The five point seven is the policy committee work plan, uh, for your information. And, um, if we could have a mover to go in camera just to take a look at the, uh, minutes quickly of the proper, uh, trustee Tripe's seconded by trustee Tomasi, go on camera.